It is six o'clock. I will call the March 28, 2023, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. I will note that we do have a quorum with all members present. Tonight, we have Bishop Warren Gwynne of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints to provide the invocation. If you would please stand or remain standing for the pledge.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before you this evening to ask for thy blessing as we discuss sensitive matters that relate to our community. We pray that thou would bless our community, that we will be leaders in it and leaders that strive to help those in need. Bless, we ask thee to bless those that struggle, that we will find ways to help them. We pray that our conversations this evening will be Christ-centered, that we will be respectful, that we'll be able to love each other as we discuss sensitive matters. Help us to become more Christ-like in how we act, in how we speak, and how we relate to each other. And we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just like Christmas taxes and budget time have become a tradition with county that we recognize our state champions from the Retreat High School and the wrestling program. So that's the first thing we're going to do. Who else here? Did we miss anybody? First of all, we're going to recognize Mr. Caleb Gibson. Come on up, Caleb. This is With County Resolution 2023-08, a resolution honoring Caleb Gibson of the Retreat High School Wrestling Team. Whereas freshman Caleb Gibson completed an outstanding 22-23 wrestling season, and whereas Caleb advanced to the Virginia High School League Class 1A State Wrestling Championships on February 18, 2023, at the Salem Civic Center. And whereas Caleb defeated Alexis Deagle Matthews High School, captured the 2023 State Championship in the 106-pound weight class, and whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends Caleb for his outstanding dedication, athletic ability, and sportsmanship. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors presents this resolution to Caleb Gibson in recognition of his 2023 individual wrestling state championship title. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this 28th day of March 2023, signed Brian W. Vault, Chair. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Moore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, sir.
Caleb, stay up front. We've got a picture of all of you here in a minute.
Caleb, you're a freshman. We do this every year. You can ask. Parker Stone. This number two. With County Resolution 2023-09, a resolution honoring Parker Stone of the Retreat High School Wrestling Team. Whereas senior Parker Stone completed outstanding 2022-2023 wrestling season, and whereas Parker advanced to the Virginia High School League Class 1A State Wrestling Championships on February 18, 2023, at the Salem Civic Center. And whereas Parker defeated Brody Coleman of Grundy, capturing the 2023 State Championship in the 120-pound weight class, and whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends Parker for his outstanding dedication, athletic ability, and sportsmanship. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors presents this resolution to Parker Stone in recognition of his 2023 individual wrestling state championship title and wishes him the very best in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this 28th day of March 2023, signed Brian W. Vault, Chair. With that, I'll entertain a motion for 2023-09.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Parker. Senior Eli Blevins. And this is number what, Eli? Four. Don't brag too much. If you want to read it, you can. I didn't think you were going to come tonight because I know you're running out of room.
Look at those fingers.
Yeah. With County Resolution 2023-10, a resolution honoring Eli Blevins of the Retreat High School Wrestling Team. Whereas senior Eli Blevins completed an outstanding 2022-2023 wrestling season, and whereas Eli advanced to the VHSL Class 1 State Wrestling Championships on February 18, 2023, at the Salem Civic Center. And whereas Eli defeated Dominic Seoli of Grundy, capturing the 2023 State Championship in the 132-pound weight class, and whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends Eli for his outstanding dedication, athletic ability, and sportsmanship. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors presents this resolution to Eli Blevins in recognition of his 2023 individual wrestling state championship title and wishes him the very best in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this 28th day of March 2023, signed Brian W. Vault, Chair. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
And while he's still up there, Coach Ross, he just got another award that I just saw the other day, like state wrestler or some other. Is that correct?
Hall of Fame. Was it Hall of Fame? Wrestler.
Wrestler. Congratulations.
Mason By. I'm glad you're a freshman. From now on wrestle people with normal names. I hope you remember this guy's name. Resolution 2023-11, a resolution honoring Mason By of the Retreat High School Wrestling Team. Whereas senior Mason By completed outstanding 2022-2023 wrestling season, and whereas Mason advanced to the VHSL Class 1A State Wrestling Championship on February 18, 2023, at the Salem Civic Center. And whereas Mason defeated Jack's Alabaw of Riverheads, captured the 2023 State Championship in the 150-pound weight class, whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends Mason for his outstanding dedication, athletic ability, and sportsmanship. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors presents this resolution to Mason By in recognition of his 2023 individual wrestling state championship title and wishes him the very best in his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this 28th day of March 2023, signed Brian W. Vault, Chair, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook, I believe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mason. Coach, us. And if you don't mind, we'll get a picture with us, and then if your parents won't kill me because I know we have some very dedicated moms and dads, get them up here and get a picture. Me?
You come up to me.
Oh. Just to give y'all hands, you're getting married. We'll be about two hours. Well, thanks, I guess. All right. And moms and dads, if y'all would get a picture, y'all much more important than I am, and I know that y'all have spent hours and hours watching these, and congratulations to y'all. Y'all know y'all will have to carry it through. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you all.
And as always, y'all are free to stay, but I completely understand. All right, moving on, the next item on the agenda, Citizens Time. As always, I'll call you up, and you have three minutes. The first person we have signed up is Ms. Karen Akers. Ms. Akers?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Karen Akers, and I'm the clerk of June Malpore, With County, and I have a simple thing to say today. We would encourage you to come see our new counters. We, after two-plus years, we finally got a workstation that's suitable to the clerks and also suitable to the public that we serve. We have three nice workstations, new counters, and we're hoping for new carpets soon, but I'd encourage all of you to come see what the ladies and the judge of With County does for the citizens of With County. Thank y'all very much. And I'd like to commend Landon Sayers, Ben and Ricky for the outstanding job they did because I tell you, you couldn't have went out and found better contractors than those three gentlemen right there. We are fortunate to have, they're the best grounds group we've ever had, and I've seen a lot of them come and go, but they are the best. So I appreciate y'all's funding and that, and please come see us. We have a nice facility now. We're still looking for some improvements, but we encourage you to come visit all of us, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Akers. Next person we have signed up is a familiar face, Mr. Coy McRoberts.
I will introduce myself. I am Coy McRoberts. As you can probably see why I'm here tonight, some pictures up there, and I want to show you and tell you what the plan is to do. After we got the property back from the Idaho Fire Department, we decided that we needed to do something that would give us money year-round to pay our bills. And we put in 20 tank sites on that property. We have remodeled, reconstructed it. As you can see, the first two pictures are the stage. We put new flooring on it. The restrooms, we painted them. We had more. More people come and we've got the restrooms built there, and the fire department, being it's not ours. So we took care of it. We painted inside, outside. We painted the concession stand. That, you see this stage here in this third picture? Our hope is that we can provide a recreation area, playground area, for the small kids in our community. We redid the ring. That'll cost $10,000. We put water on all the places on the park. We got rid of the mud pit down there, the truck pool. I think it's more headed. And the pink door, the pink and the blue, that's the bathroom. And the other one is the concession stand. And this, the last stage, is our, is our to have. And we ran just a little bit short on land. I ain't a bum, and I ain't used to bugging you tonight. I'm asking you to help me and help my kids over there. They probably 25 kids around that area there. The majority of this park is in Carroll County, the stage about even with county. We just need a little help. If you can help me, I appreciate it. If you can't help me, I appreciate it. And whatever you do, think of us. We'll with our team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McRoberts. Next person we have signed up is Mr. Jerry Blevins. Mr. Blevins?
Excuse me. My writing report for this reporting period shows no activity. After almost 20 years, a problem is nice not to have any trespassing or damage done to my property. However, on a national, international stage, problems appear to be growing at astonishing rate. Now when I watch the NBC News, I don't see Richard Engel reporting from Ukraine on how Ukraine is winning the war. Instead, I see Putin riding in a car on the island of Crimea. The news media has portrayed Russia as a nation that's aggressive and only interests in acquiring more territory and committing war crimes. Mind you, I am not choosing sides in this conflict, but it seems the Russian military is highly motivated, and they have the support of the majority of the Russian people. Recently, a Russian jet damaged a drone of ours so badly it had to be ditched. The Russian pilot had to be the craziest pilot ever flew a jet or the best pilot ever flew a jet. Our reply was it will not deter us from flying another drone in the same area. It probably won't deter the Russians from taking it out either. When Russia stricken its allies with China, it makes the above events quite troubling indeed. Closer home, if you attend the, excuse me, if you attended the late September 2022 With County Board of Supervisors meeting, you hear me state at this podium that raising interest rates was unlike a controlled inflation. Now that we have had several rate hikes, has it helped inflation? I don't know about anyone else, but it sure has not for me. It has, however, brought down several banks. To end this speech on a positive note, we've had some really great weather here in South Louis, Virginia for the past couple of years, and that we cannot be grateful for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. And the last person we have signed up is Mr. Zach Lester.
Good afternoon, board. Thank you, guys, for all that you do, always. I brought a book in today. It just came out a couple of months ago. It's the Report on the Hunter Biden Laptop by Marco Polo. It's a nonprofit organization. They have went through the laptop and the iCloud from his account and compiled over 400 crimes that are listed here. There's a lot of vulgar stuff. There's a lot of macabre also on there, but they've kind of pushed all that to the side and just focused on the evidence. So it's in nice book form for you guys. I'm going to let you borrow it. I would love to have it back in a month or so, but please take some time and go through it just for understanding of what we're doing in the world today. The DA of New York, I can't remember the town, is going after Donald Trump for a misdemeanor. It is at Manhattan, but they're also not, they don't prosecute felonies there. It's one of the highest crime areas in the United States, and so the, the politicalization of our federal government and three-letter agencies becoming a pretty big concern. And so I just want to point it out to you guys that we and the lower branches of government have to build a foundation to try to fight the current regime as they're going to school board meetings and intimidating parents for speaking out against certain policies. They're showing up at reporters' houses. The IRS just showed up at Matt Taibbi's house because he was testifying against the weaponization of the federal government, and he's doing it through the Twitter files, all the information that's coming from the social media platforms that are showing major censorship on our side, major misinformation, and fact-checking, all trying to curtail to the current administration. This is a massive issue. The reason I talk about all these major issues, I know you guys really aren't able to take any avenue to do anything about the Hunter Biden laptop, but in our county, if we are strong, if we are united, then we can at least stand against the communist or authoritarian regime that continues to beat down on America. Our economy's in the tank. Inflation's really high. We're at one of the worst points in our country's history. What can we do to stop it, though? We can involve our community. Not many people show up here to talk about real-world defense. I think that's an issue. I think we all should be up to date on at least what's happening. So I brought this for you guys to go through. Again, put the full armor of God on before you do because there's a lot of hard things to stomach, a lot of weird activities, but over 400 crimes are easily proven, and we can't get anything to happen. 2020 election was stolen. We can prove that. We can't get anything to happen. It's mass censorship on one side of the aisle. We can prove all that, but we can't get anything done. So how do we move forward as a nation? I know you guys are wonderful people, do a lot for our community. If we unite, if we stand together, maybe we can hold on to the morals that founded this nation, or we can all watch as the ship sinks and clarify our tune. Keep up the good work, guys. Please, everybody take a little time, and maybe together if you just go through some string of graphic presidential signs and stuff. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. So all the citizens, we have signed up for Citizens Time, so I'll close Citizens Time. Moving on with our agenda, we have a couple of public hearings. The first one is a notice of intent to apply. I'll read the public hearing notice. The With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing in the boardroom of the County Administration Office located at 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, on March 28, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. The purpose of this meeting is to give notice of With County's intent to apply for USDA rural development funds to assist with installation of a water line to serve Barrett Mill Road area. Comments regarding economic and environmental impacts, service area, alternatives to the project, and other related project issues are encouraged. All interested citizens are urged to attend. For additional information, please contact Stephen Barr at the number listed. I'll open up the public hearing. I'll note that we did not have anybody to sign up to speak. Mr., so I'll close the public hearing portion. Mr. Barr, is there anything you want to add?
No action needs to be taken. We'll just send this information on to rural development that we have this public hearing. Thank you.
The next public hearing is on proposed issuance of bonds by With County, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors of With County, Virginia, the Board, will hold a public hearing on proposed issuance at one time or from time to time of bonds by With County. The estimated maximum amount of the bonds proposed to be issued is $465,180.31 in the aggregate. The proposed use of the bond proceeds is to pay cost of capital improvements to wastewater facilities of the county and to pay cost of issuing the bonds. The public hearing, which may be continued or adjourned, and at which persons may appear and present their views on the proposed bond issue, will be held at 6:00 p.m. or assumed thereafter as the matter may be heard on March 28, 2023, before the Board in the boardroom of the County Administration Building located at 340 South Sixth Street in Withfield, Virginia. Again, we did not have anybody signed up to speak, so I will close the public hearing on that issue. Is there anything you want to add to that, Mr. Barr?
Mr. Chairman, I would request that you all adopt the resolution that is in here so Ms. Collins can get that filed so that we can do a closing on this bond on April 6, I believe is the closing date of it. This is for the Sanitary Sewer Project that we received the funds from, SSES. We request your all's approval.
I'm trying to scroll down and find it, Mr. Barr.
Resolution starts on page 67. Resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bond in the amount not to exceed $465,180.31.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion?
Mr. Barr, just for clarification, does this have anything to do with any of the...
No, it does not. This is the Sanitary Sewer Evaluation Project where we've got a large amount of grant funds to cover this, and then we have to take a little bit of more loan funds to redo all of those pipes and infiltration issues.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, is there any more questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
And I would request that you all authorize staff to sign the commitment letter as amended, and then the draft of the financing agreements to be approved as to form.
Right, entertain a motion to, for staff to execute the documents.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else related to that, Mr. Barr?
No, sir. I believe that covers everything. Appreciate your all's assistance on that. We, our contractor is waiting. We've already bid this out. They've, engineer sent the form today just to confirm we're closing April 6, get this project underway. So thank you all.
All right, next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices. Each board member has received a copy of the invoices in their board package. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any invoice that any board member wants to pull out and/or discuss? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on our agenda is the minutes from our previous meeting, March 14, 2023. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any question or corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Move on to old business. We have appointments. Mr. Barr, do you have anything on appointments?
I do not have anything at this point in time, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody have any appointments? All right. Anything else under old business?
I do not have anything, no, sir.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything under old business?
No, sir, I do not.
All right, we'll move on to reports. The first report we have is from Latrell. All right, we'll move on to reports, the first, uh, report we have is from the treasurer, Ms. Gwynn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Snatching agenda because I'm a meeting behind, I'm gonna print it out. Okay, um, for this evening you have your, um, your treasurer's report and, um, within your board package for the month of February, month end, um, we had a, um, consolidated account balance of $85,440,443. Of that, the balance in the general fund is $42,958,158.16. One thing I will note, you'll see, um, a little differently in this report versus the one previously, um, there seemed to be some, uh, confusion and concern about where money was placed and things like that with the, um, the investment in funds to the VIP account when, um, I had moved money there to take advantage of a better interest rate than what the bank was offering. In this report, the finance director, what she's done is, uh, combined all of those funds back together to list them in one, one grouping, so the January report, you had, um, like, a general fund balance that was at the bank and then a general fund balance that was with VIP, so you had to combine those. But these have all been combined, going forward, um, actually the bank has come back and offered us a better interest rate. So I have moved the majority of the funds that I had moved out to VIP back to our bank. So they are paying us actually a better interest rate than what VIP was. So, um, the majority of everything is now reinvested back with our, our bank to get a better return on investment with the, the rate that they're offering. So, um, I don't have anything as far as any other detail on the financial statement unless someone has a question about anything.
Does anybody have any questions about the financial board?
I don't.
Um, just a couple of other minor things, uh, of course, as you're aware, the, uh, real estate deadline is Friday, the 31st, um, tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, um, our office will be open until 6:00 to try to accommodate folks that, um, uh, are wanting to come in and pay and potentially unable to make it in between 8:35 hours that we're open. So, uh, we will be open a little bit later the next three days to try to help those folks out. So, um, that's kind of really all that's going on in our world at the moment is just, um, trying to get to, to Friday at this point in time.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Gwynn?
Uh, Ms. Gwynn, could you give us an update on the refund process, where we at?
Still working on those, um, I've got a batch that, um, very close to releasing to, um, the AP department for processing, so it's just, um, just a slow process. So I'm hoping, once we get past this week, we can better concentrate on that and I can find some folks to come in and be able to start working on those. I'd like to have all of those cleared out if possible, my, my goal is by the end of April to get all of those out, um, because we, we should be able to better, better, um, concentrate on them as far as our staffing, but like I said, get some other folks in to be able to work on that as well. Um, we've gotten, uh, pay dates, um, up through about, probably not even a third of the alphabet, actually, um, as far as getting those, uh, that data so we know who qualifies and who doesn't. But it's, um, as I mentioned before, it is a slow process, it's a time-consuming process, but it's being worked on as we can. I've got a part-time person in the office right now that comes in and periodically works on things. She's been working on a lot of the stuff for us right now because we've all been tied up with, uh, with real estate payments coming in, so I'm hoping. Like I said, we get past Friday, we can catch our breath a little bit more because with, um, the finishing up the mail for personal property and then the timing of real estate coming out, everything's just kind of been boom, 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 so.
So when we get a batch, or when you all get a batch complete, we're gonna send it out to the finance team here, right?
Or release it to the finance department, and I had already, um, spoken with the finance director about that previously, because we talked about as we get, um, get some ready, I'll just release that batch and that way we can kind of keep a continuous cycle, that way we're not holding all of them until the very end, but we're getting them out in manageable batches that it's not, you know, oh my gosh, there's thousands of checks that have to be mailed out or hundreds and hundreds. But something is a little bit more manageable for us on our end, but also for them on this end of it, of trying to get those processed.
Okay, just from my understanding, you said you wanted them all out by the end of April, is that true?
I'm hoping by the end of April, that is my ultimate goal, is to have them out by then. So if we can, um, can keep everything moving, um, like I had mentioned the other day, we had to, um, uh, reestablish some settings and parameters in the new version or the upgraded version because some things that we had set up in the old system didn't carry over to the new upgraded version. So I had to, um, re, reestablish some settings there and, uh, get those set up. So we're, we're working on it as quickly as the process will allow us at this point, so.
Just, just for a little bit of clarification, when you, when we talked two weeks ago, was it? It was two weeks ago, that it was, that we didn't, that you tried to talk us out of the January thing?
And I tried to talk you out of the January, I had commented that the board had stated that the refunds or the rebates would be sent out in January, but with this, with the realis- or, excuse me, the personal property deadline and still working on mail, I knew it would be hard for us to get all of these out in January, and I do understand it's now March and that was January. But it is a very time-consuming manual process, as I've tried to make very clear to Mr. Barr and to the board as we were going through that.
But, we, I mean, when, when the motion was made to do it in January, you were, you were present and you didn't say anything against it, so the fact that the people were told that it was going out in January is not your fault and it's not our fault, okay?
Right.
Um, you know, it was just a date thrown out there and you didn't see any problem with it when it was made and we didn't see any problem with it. Now, things have developed where it's a problem, but the January date is nobody's fault.
Yeah, and I, I, I have the understanding that it was going to, they would, we were going to try to get them done in January, but I believe what was said was we were starting in January.
Yeah.
I mean, I had to have to go back and look, but that's what I'm trying to explain to people, you know?
And, and anticipation when it was first discussed, the tax tickets were planned to be done, well, as you know, the tax ticket process took even longer and it wasn't until January that we even got the real estate tax ticket side of it taken care of. So, yeah, it's, it's been delayed longer than what any of us hoped for and expected.
Yeah.
It's, um, you know, and I had hoped in January we would get started, but like I said, we'd gotten the real estate information in January, so we had to, normally takes us about four to five weeks to get all of that data ready or bill out. So we were trying to rush to get that out as quickly as possible. So we got those, that ready in, not quite mid-February, bills hit about mid-February, it was a little before that, but, um, the, the timing of everything is kind of just, just stacked and just kept stacking and, and we're just trying to dig out is where we are.
Well, and then, you know, when January didn't happen, the last meeting in January, when we talked about it and, and you were asked, you said you were gonna try to do it starting in February.
Yeah.
Well, that didn't happen either.
It didn't.
You know, I mean, it's just, as far as laying blame on anybody, I don't know as though anybody should be blamed for not getting it done. And I just, I, I'm hearing a whole lot of, y'all promised, well, you know, it was, uh...
And, and going back to February, yes, we were trying to work on it, we were trying, of course, it's March, we're trying to work on them, um, it's, and I hate to keep going back and say it's time-consuming, but it is a time-consuming process because we can't just push a button and tell the system to make these adjustments to all of these accounts, that's a manual adjustment. So that, that's the thing is it's, um, it, again, it's time-consuming, but we're, we're getting there, we're further than we've been, so, um, I'm really hoping that we can get all these out by the end of April because that, that's my goal, is trying to, to get through these as quickly as we possibly can. So, um, it's, um, kind of, right now we've, it's kind of been a slow process because we're trying to figure it out, but I think once we can get everything figured out, we can keep moving pretty good on that, so.
Yeah, and I would think, I would think after Friday or the 31st, which is, um, we would make this a priority over everything else.
Yeah, like I said, I'm hoping once we get through Friday, we can concentrate more on that because we're, we're in pretty good standing with, um, our mail unless it comes in really heavy over the next few days or, well, even the early part of next week. Um, I have one person that started with me earlier in the month, I have her disdedicated, she's basically just working mail to try to keep that up. So we're not weeks and weeks behind like we normally are that it takes us, you know, three weeks or a month to get through the mail process. So I can keep her on that and then that frees everybody up and then getting my part-time help in to keep that moving.
How many, how many people do you have in your office right now?
Right now, there's four full-time, I'm looking to hire my fifth full-time that I have the vacancy for.
Out of, do, do those four include you or is it three?
Yes, yes, no, but I have, there's four of us full-time, I have a, a part-time person that's coming in periodically.
Out of those people, how many, how many of them can actually do this process?
Um, all of my full-time people can, uh, my new person's not, um, not familiar with it, but I could put her on it very easily.
Well, and I, I mentioned this before, that we've got some costs, some vacancy savings, um, you know, I put it out there before, I don't remember if it was last month, month before, but, um, you know, if, if they want to work some on the weekends for overtime, you know, I threw that out there, I've never heard anything back, I don't know if they're not interested, but, you know, this, this needs to be a priority, this needs to happen in the next 30 days.
And we've been, um, I'll say the last few days has been a little, I hate to say slower because I think end of the week is gonna be crazy, but we, when the bills first came out, it's kind of like taken cycles, that there's been days that we've literally been at the front counter all day long and, I mean, we're, we're just mentally exhausted by the end of the day. Um, we're getting, you know, belligerent because of the reassessments, um, because the bills are coming out late and, you know, we're, we're explaining there were software issues, you know, through everything and, you know, we can't control assessment, but, you know, we're trying to make people aware of what the situation's been, but there's been days that my staff's just been mentally exhausted at the end of the day, so asking them to stay longer, um, I feel like has not been fair to them because there's days that we don't even know who we are when we close that door at 5:00 because we've just been belligerent all day long. But, um, I am, like I said, we'll have some part-time folks coming in, so, um, hoping to, to be able to find some, a couple of people, at least two, um, as far as extra computers that we have that I can get some folks on that, so.
Is putting part-time people at the front desk an option? Or is it worse putting them up there and it would be putting them in there?
Yeah, if we're, um, if, if we're not busy, that we have a steady stream of people coming in or anything like that, we could utilize the front counter computers. But they would not, of course, be able to, you know, wait on the public or anything like that, but a lot of times, um, everybody walks up to the three windows and expects to be waited on at one of those places, so if someone says, you know, I'm sorry, I can't help you, they can get a little frustrated, but it would be putting them at what we call the mail station. Um, or we have a computer in the back, back room that we use in the mornings for, uh, bouncing out and making our bank deposit, um, I could utilize those two computers. Or if one of us is away from our desk, we could put somebody at our desks.
You're saying it's faster to train them to work on the refunds than it is to train them for all the things on the front off, that, I think that's your question, yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't ready with you there, but yes, by far, I could, I could easily have them to work on the rebate, um, do that faster than you can go through the whole process of everything or to actually wait on customers coming in to free us up.
Mr. Barr, and I don't, I don't know if this is even feasible, um, but the, the due date's Friday?
Yes.
Would it be feasible to extend the due date another seven days? Waive all penalties and interest for that seven days? And have Ms. Gwynn close her office to the public for five days and get these pounded out? Is that even an option?
Probably be hard to close five days, um, if we would be past the due date.
I mean, I, I'm just, I, I'm just throwing stuff out there because...
Yeah, I don't know, if, if you extend the date, I don't think it helps at all in the process of closing the office. You're almost better to go ahead and, and leave the 31st as your due date.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, I didn't mean to extend the due date, waive the, the, the late fees, penalties, interest for a week so she can shut the doors to the public and they can concentrate on nothing but getting this done.
I understand what you're saying, the challenge was trying to waive the late fees or then the people that mail it in two days later or wait, you gotta go back and, you gotta look at these, the late days on that, so.
Yeah, and it, it would be penalty and interest now on payments after the due date, um, unless you change your date back to whatever the due date was, um, the way the new upgrade is, we can't, um, before there was a box, we could move around on our screen and see what we needed to move and it's not user-friendly right now to, to waive. I do understand allowing people another week to pay without being penalized because we are getting, um, a lot of feedback because a lot of folks came over the four days that we ended up being closed for the upgrade, um, which took longer than anticipated to get all of our system back, um, but, um, it could be a possibility, not necessarily, um, not necessarily closed to the public, but, uh, we get beyond the end of the month and our end of month stuff, we could, you know, dedicate, at least two of us could be dedicated more to strictly working on those. So, um, i- it's hard to, to fully close to the public, especially right now with, um, we're just coming off of a deadline and, um...
Yeah, I, I think that she's got to focus, you won't have as many people at the counter, the people, I mean, they may sit at the counter working based on where the computer is, but you're gonna have pretty much one window open, but they'll be working the mail when, entering the mail in when they're not helping the customers, but the other employees are definitely gonna have to get all the mail entered in to get all of that in, um, in the process. And then once, you know, hopefully by next week, if all the mail and everything's caught up, that focus time is strictly on all the rebates and everything that are there. So, I understand what you're asking, I just, I, I don't know that changing the dates helps us out as much because then you gotta change it in the system and all that, it may add more, more changes on the system for them than it would be just, you know, I, I think the point is she might need to close her door a couple of days next week just to get caught up on the mail and all of the payments that have come in.
So, so if she, if you take next week to get caught up on the payments that you're receiving through this week?
We'll see.
That'll leave you 15 days to get these completed?
It can be closed, but like I said, my goal is to get all of them out by the end of April. It may not happen, but I want to get all of them out before we even send out late notices because, um, I do know folks are, are looking for them, they're asking us about them, they're asking you all about them, um, and it, it needs to be done, I'm very well aware that it needs to be completed, uh, we're, we're, you know, really past the time we need to get it completed, but I want to get as many as we can done.
So, so that's 15 working days, uh, unless you take Monday off for Easter?
Um, no, as far as I know, we won't be closing Monday, so.
You're probably, are you closed Good Friday?
Um, possibility, um, we, we've talked in the office of, about being closed that day, but still working to get things done. And I know generally, um, the board has closed, um, you know, the county offices for Good Friday, but we have talked about still working that day. We've been working, um, last week and this week, I've got my employees on a rotation of, you know, working till 6:00, so the next three days, we're all gonna be there, but we'll probably stay on that rotation for a little bit. But at the same time, we have daily work that has to be done as well, um, to, uh, you know, to keep everything posted to the ledger and be ready for month end close out, so.
Just one, one more question, Ms. Gwynn?
Sure.
So you're saying mailed or submitted to the finance department by the end of the April?
Submitted, um, because we'll have to submit a batch and then they will, um, I don't know what else involved in all their processing and pulling that batch in and printing the checks and then they'll have to, um, um, put those in envelopes and of course, put postage on and get them mailed out, which, um, you know, won't be that time-consuming on, on that aspect of it, so.
So everything should be for the finance department, whether 28th, that's the last?
I mean, you know, if we get them on the, the last batch end of the day, you know, it should be the next Monday or whatever the day is to, for them to go out. But our staff is, has been, you know, they, they, they understand that we're gonna be printing them, putting them in envelopes and sending them out, so.
And so for our, for our folks here, that would be priority once they get them?
Yeah, absolutely, that's, yeah.
All right, does anybody else have any more questions for Ms. Gwynn?
Just a quick comment, just, once again, thank you for everything you're doing and thank our finance department for everything they're doing to get them out. I know a lot of citizens are very upset, everyone's pointing the fingers, there's board members upset, sure, your office isn't loving it, but, you know, I really feel like people might be losing sight that this is something that we didn't have to do. I mean, we did it because we felt like it was the right thing to do, but... I mean, we did it because we felt like it was the right thing to do because of the parts we were dealt last year.
And it's never been done.
Yeah, it's never been done.
Of course noted beforehand that it's something that's never been done by a board before.
Yeah, so I think it's important to throw that out there and then one more time, you know, since it's been a few months, because this is, you know, a great thing that we're doing is, it's not perfect, but I know everyone's working on it, so.
And I don't know that, um, that there's a full understanding of things that are happening within our office either because there's continuous day-to-day operations that have to be done and things like that. It's not just, you know, drop everything and strictly work on this project and then, you know, strictly work on that project. There's, you know, continuous things that have to be done, but, um, you know, we're trying to manage them as best we can and get them all done, but you can only do so much in a day.
Right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next report, Ms. Vault, Commissioner of Revenue, you have anything?
Hello, I'm already done. Was anyone have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions from Ms. Vault?
I do not.
Thank you, ma'am. Sheriff Foster, you have anything? All right, move on to new business. We have the consent calendar. Each board member's received a copy of the consent calendar in their package. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horny. Is there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Next, we have our fiscal year '23 expenditure budget for the fourth quarter, or fourth quarter appropriations. I believe we have a, received a memo from Ms. Williams along with a list of the fourth quarter appropriations. I'll entertain a motion to approve the fourth quarter appropriation for FY '23.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on the appropriations? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else under new business, Mr. Barrett?
Uh, no, sir. Do not have anything else other, under new business other than the staff reports.
All right. Yeah, it's on the back page.
Sorry. You're confusing.
Bad page breaker. Move on to staff reports, says Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I do have a few action items to request tonight. Uh, the first one relates to our 911 consoles. Uh, this is not the furniture that holds the monitors. This is the paging interface so that when our dispatchers push the button for a fire department, it, it, or, or rescue squad, it, it pages the, the right agency. Uh, as we're upgrading our radios, our contractor has said this is the right time to, to upgrade that console. We've been having a lot of problems with the console that we have, uh, especially in terms of maintenance. We're having a hard time getting the, the contractor, even though we're paying an annual maintenance contract, having a hard time getting the contractor to get in and get those, uh, items fixed or, or changed as, as we need them. With the new console that we're recommending, um, we would have a contractor within two hours, so, uh, we, we'd be able to have those fixes when we need them, and as we all know, in emergency services, you, you can't wait, uh, for an emergency fix, so. The, uh, memo attached outlines what the cost would be, uh, for, uh, the, the, uh, the replacement. Uh, we can do it in current year funds. The, the replacement cost is $169,925.95, which can be done on state contract, uh, through this contractor. It's a, a VITA, uh, contract. We can do it with personnel savings cost. Uh, I've told you all along, uh, even though, uh, Director McKenzie and Deputy Director Grubb are working hard to try to find, uh, personnel, that, uh, we, we've not found, uh, enough dispatchers, uh, this year, so we do have, uh, some vacancy savings. So I would request that you authorize us to enter into an agreement with ProCom to go ahead and upgrade those consoles as we're upgrading the radios. I'll be glad to answer, answer any questions you've got.
Entertain a motion to amend the radio system agreement with ProCom to include the console changeover at the state contract price.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? I've got one. Mary Jo's Telx, what you want? Good enough for me.
As I was going to say, you good?
We, we are in the minority. We, we are one of the few in Southwest Virginia that does not use Telx.
Yes, we are.
So this would make us compatible with most of our surrounding agencies.
Does anybody else have any questions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
So approved.
The second action item I would request your recommendation on, um, we have gone out for a request for proposals for Speedo's replacement air packs. Uh, they're down to eleven operational air packs and they are off of, I believe, the, uh, I believe the 2003 standard for NFPA, so they're at the end of, of their life cycle with their current packs. The, uh, the low bid, or the low proposal that we had was from, uh, Sureflow for MSA equipment, and we have MSA equipment with most of our agencies in, in the county. So this would make Speedo compatible with everyone except for Rural Retreat and, uh, with Full Fire and EMS, so. The, uh, the cost for doing, uh, this under, uh, MSA, or under Sureflow is $161,726. Um, that does exceed the available budget, but we have, um, other areas, uh, the, the fire department, uh, support budget, we could, uh, pay the remainder out of, so I don't think we need, uh, budget action. The issue is, we've been waiting on Rural Development. Uh, we, we've had a grant application into them for over a year. Uh, we, we, we don't believe that this is going to be funded, um, so, uh, even though we would like to wait for that $50,000, uh, if we don't have an answer by Thursday, the price goes up by another, uh, nine or 10 percent. So, um, if, if we're not going to get that grant from Rural Development, we'd be paying the more expensive price. So, uh, I would, uh, ask for your guidance and, uh, if, uh, if it suits you to, to go ahead with the purchase if we don't have an answer from Rural Development, uh, by Thursday at the $161,726 proposal price.
So does anybody want to make a motion that we award the, uh, contract to Sureflow for $161,726 on Thursday?
Same move.
If we've not heard from Rural Development?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Have a second by Mr. Horny. Is there any questions or discussion on that one?
No, just a comment. I think that's the way to go. I don't think we need to be waiting around.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved.
And just for clarification on that motion, that is whether or not we've heard from Rural Development, because we, if we've heard from Rural Development, they're giving us the grant, we're going to go ahead and issue the purchase order, but we're getting $50,000 for it, so.
Just not before the deadline.
Just not yet, right.
The, uh, the third action item is on the, uh, hockey facility, uh, rebid at the Apex Center. I, I put a memo in front of you, a revised pricing, uh, from CJL engineers, um, that they have done what they were contractually obligated to do under the initial agreement. Um, the, the bid environment led us to a, a bid that we weren't comfortable with. It was well above what we, uh, thought was reasonable, so, uh, they're going back and doing some redesign to try to cut our cost and, and make it work within our budget. Would ask that you authorize staff to enter, uh, to amend the agreement with CJL, um, so that we can do, uh, adding, um, up to $18,500 to the contract cost. Uh, what they came back and gave us was a, an hourly rate not to exceed $18,500 for the additional work. And staff recommends, um, you authorize us to amend that agreement.
All right, entertain a motion to authorize staff to enter into that agreement.
Same move.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horny. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
So, oh, sorry, Jesse. So approved.
And then, uh, finally, uh, something that we've, we've talked about over and over again, um, you know, trying to, to clear up some things on the public safety side. The recommendation, or the, the requirement from the state is that we have a fire department ID number if we're going to hire employees to act, uh, on our behalf, whether it's acting on behalf of the county or acting for one of our agencies. So this is, uh, to get us to the point where we can, um, hire part-time firefighters and assign them to the Max Meadows Station so that they can provide, uh, daytime weekday coverage, uh, there, uh, at that station. I've got a, uh, resolution in the packet, uh, that, uh, would, uh, meet the state's requirements, at least we think it would meet the state's requirements. I've asked them for sample resolution and not received that, so this is my best stab at, uh, getting, uh, something that they will, uh, approve. So it, it does, um, spell out what, what the terms are and, uh, in order to, um, get that FDID, somebody's got to do the paperwork. Somebody's got to sign off on it and, and certify that, that, you know, we're, we're authorized to act, uh, this way. Uh, so I've asked that you designate me as your, your acting, uh, head of that department so that you can, um, have me sign the paperwork and do the application process.
Right, entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented by Mr. Hankins.
Same move.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved.
All of my other, uh, uh, other, other items are informational. Uh, I do know that there's been some concern about our sign at the animal control center. Uh, the replacement sign has been ordered, so that should be up, uh, probably within the next three weeks or so, so. Also, our animal control trucks have traditionally been unmarked and, um, so one of our, our local vendors is going to be marking our animal control trucks, so they'll, they'll have law enforcement-type markings on them, uh, to, you know, show that when they show up at someone's house, that they're acting in an official capacity, and, uh, staff has been working with Sheriff Foster to approve a design that, uh, that is functional, so. And I do have, um, some photos, uh, in, in my report, uh, just, uh, showing you the variety of things that have been spilled on our highways over the last, uh, last couple of months, from bananas to shortening to, uh, to diesel. So, uh, I, I do want to commend, this has been a rough month for our fire departments and our rescue squads, particularly with the fatality in, um, um, the Sanders Mines, uh, area. So, um, you know, let's thank those folks for the, the work that they've done. All of our chiefs have been very cooperative, uh, with me and very helpful as I've been filling in in the, uh, emergency management capacity.
And also thank you for putting that hat on. I've been trying to find you a hat rack for your office. Quite big enough.
It, it is so much better, uh, because of Matt's fire department background and training than the many times that I was in that assistant county administrator seat, and I got assigned that, and I appreciate the fire department members helping me out in the process when I was out there because, uh, that was completely outside of my realm, but somebody from the county had to do it. But Matt's, uh, it's, it's great because he, he knows, uh, he knows enough about it without the, been involved with it daily that he can go out and handle the hazmat incidents, so it's appreciated.
We just don't want you filling out a worker's comp claim while you've been throwing him under the bus for months.
Johnny Kinter's one that really appreciates him because Johnny got stuck doing that for a while as well, so.
And, and thank you on the replacing the sign at the, uh, dog shelter. Um, I assume you're talking about that blank panel that's on two posts? Looks like it used to be words on it.
That's the one. While we're talking about emergency management, I do want to let you all know, and I'll, I'll say it publicly, uh, we, we have hired a deputy emergency management coordinator. Uh, he'll start, um, his official first day is April 1st. Uh, he, he'll start with us in the office on April 3rd. Uh, we've hired Chuck Parnell, who, uh, has been serving as the captain of Lead Mines Rescue Squad. Uh, Chuck's very eager to, to get going in this emergency management role, and I'm, uh, glad to have him coming on board.
That's his first day, Wednesday's his first night.
Hopefully not April 1st.
As soon as that phone rings and you don't answer. All right, anything else, Mr. Hankins?
No, sir.
All right, move on to county administrator, Mr. Barrett.
Uh, first item, uh, fairly straightforward. As y'all are aware, Clonker Penoplast has done an expansion. We had incentive payments associated with their expansion. If you ride by, it is a very large building. Uh, looks very nice, and it's also, looks like it's laid out for another expansion in the future, so we hope they come back sometime in the future and build on the rest of the pad that's there. But request y'all amend and appropriate $31,000 to go with the $69,000 currently in the budget, uh, to provide them their incentive payment, uh, for this year.
All right, entertain a motion to amend and appropriate $31,000 to the 8107-434140.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Next item is, uh, on behalf of the sheriff, and I appreciate him submitting this. We have an e-summons account that, um, provides the ability for them to collect funds, uh, for the tickets and things they write. Uh, as you can see in his letter, they have, uh, purchased some items that are eligible to come out of the e-summons account, so they are reimbursing the general fund. So my memo on page 195, I would request you all authorize the transfer of the funds of the $16,417 from the e-summons account to the general fund and amend and appropriate the two items that's requested by the sheriff.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Mr. Smith. Excuse me, is there any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. And I apologize, I should have abstained on that. Been a long week, it's only Tuesday. I forgot to let Jesse vote, and I forgot not to vote.
Do you want to recall for that vote?
Yeah, yeah, let's do a recall on that one, um, just to keep everybody on the up and up. So I'll entertain a motion to, for that request.
Same move.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Second by Mr. Smith. Do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 I'll abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved.
Next item is a change order for KNA, uh, building contractors. A county engineer has been working hard with Doug Williams, the engineer for the Lane Group, uh, on, uh, their general conditions on this change order. They've worked it down to a, uh, manageable number and request an approval of the change order, the amount of $72,646.83. And as you can see, the building is coming along nicely now, once we got out of the ground, so, uh, be glad when we get the brick around it.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the change order as presented.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved. Don't do that. I'm already having a bad time. It was catchy. It was contagious.
Next item, uh, is just informational only. Um, representative from the Virginia Department of Health stopped by to see me a few weeks ago, um, to talk about, um, potential for funding for the Staley Springs, uh, which is at the crossroads in Rural Retreat. Uh, basically right behind the crossroads, Creamery, which is back open, by the way. But, uh, the town of Rural Retreat has for years been interested in, uh, developing that spring. They used it, uh, years ago, but it would need a new membrane filtration plant to go with it. Um, the health department came, talked to the town of Rural Retreat, came and talked to us. I attended a meeting with, uh, town manager of Rural Retreat and the county administrator from Smith County, uh, to talk about, um, that, uh, that project. One of the options that we discussed in one of the proposals is to look at, um, creating an authority... similar to what we have with the New River Regional Water Authority and, you know, whatever it's called, Staley Springs Authority or whatever, that would be made up of those three entities to create, to, uh, fund the creation of a water treatment plant up there. Um, and then we would treat like the River Regional Water Authority, everybody would buy in their percentage. So if, if Rural Retreat needed fifty percent of the capacity and we needed twenty-five percent and Smith County needed twenty-five percent, uh, we could, we could work that into it, apply for the grant funding that is available, uh, to, to, to have this constructed. And then you set a rate for your water based on actual cost of the water. Everybody pays debt service on the plant as it is. It's very preliminary, um, but I just wanted to bring it up to you all. It, it can provide another source of water for our With County West. As you know, in the past, we've had some disinfection byproduct issues, uh, with, with the water that we have purchased from the town of Withville. This would give us the ability to purchase water from the authority that we would be a member of to go into our With County West system, which could be blended with the Withville water and help take care of our disinfection byproduct issue because it's not coming from the, the surface treated. It's coming out of the, the Staley Springs. So there's lots of positives that could also help with obtaining the funding for it. Uh, very preliminary. I just want to bring it up to you. Rural Retreat is talking about it. Uh, would take some steps to get it going, but I just wanted to, to make certain y'all didn't have any questions. It can provide us a good source of water on the western end of the county.
Does anybody have any questions about, uh, about that from Mr. Barrett?
No.
I will, I will work with, with the, the two entities as it is. I'll work with, um, our, um, bond counsel that assisted us with the original project to get, with the New River Regional Water Authority to go a little bit of it. I've provided, uh, both other entities a copy of how we set up the New River Regional Water Authority, the paperwork that went with it, and we'll see if, uh, it's something that, that we can, can work out. We think that provides a fair and equitable way to tap into a source to provide water for, for citizens. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We have the agreement, um, for legal services for Mr. Farthing.
And I would comment that I sent y'all a corrected one today. Under item number three, it would state to attend the regular monthly meetings of the board of supervisors, not just the second monthly meeting. The language from the old one was second monthly meeting only, but Mr. Farthing has been requested to attend all of them for quite some time and he has been.
Laid a typo, but he didn't leave out one M zero. I said you missed that one, though. Do what?
I did not add it.
Well, that's true. All right, does anybody have any questions about the, uh, agreement for Farthing Legal PC is With County's attorney, the contract that's presented?
No questions, but just thanks for everything you've done over the years, years course. And I know it's been many, many years since we re-looked at the agreement, so definitely time.
Does, uh, whoa, how long, how long is that for, Mr. Barrett? And I, I'll scroll past it.
Yep.
It's generally one year and renews automatically, uh, but I work at the pleasure of the board. Uh, you know, if the board decides to move on or change counsel at any point, that's your pleasure.
But when you get high-speed broadband, is there any chance?
According to my wife, she says she'll believe it when, when we go.
I know, she told me that last week.
So, um, I'm not sure that changes my agreement. I've got high speed at my office, so I'm okay.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the agreement to engage Mr. Farthing's legal services.
So moved.
Have a motion by, Mr. Horny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else, Mr. Barrett?
No, sir, thank you.
Very quickly, county attorney.
I don't have anything to report, uh, to you all unless you all have any questions about any particular items.
Does anybody have twenty-five cents worth of questions? Uh, I'll reiterate what Ms. Lawson said, Mr. Farthings, that we appreciate what you do. Very well-versed in county matters and, um, uh, as far as the broadband, Mr. Hankins promises it's coming.
All right, thank you.
All right, move on to board supervisors' time, Mr. Burnett.
I don't have nothing at this time.
Ms. Lawson?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Cook?
The health department's looking at that water out there. Oh, they're looking at the sewer, too. It's a drainage park.
Understood.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, just one thing, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Barrett, did we have, get any word from the signage request for the sheriff's office? Where they was wanting better signage down here in front of the facility?
No, and I, that, that, I will follow up on that and look at the, I know we, we've looked at, our signs that we put up, the posters we've got of the signs outside need to be improved. I was looking at that today in the process, but we'll look at, at the better access or signage to get into it.
Thanks, sir. That's all I have.
Mr. Horny?
Uh, don't believe I have anything at this time.
Mr. Terry?
At this time, sir.
Mr. Barrett, the only thing I have is, um, next time you talk to, uh, VDOT, will you have them look at Spraker Road?
Yes, sir.
I had occasion to visit the Hamlet of Speedwell this morning and that road's pretty rough to have their headquarters on it. I don't know if it's there around Greek Mill or, I don't know when the last time you've been through there, but it's got several potholes in it, so. I don't know if they're.
All their employees must be coming from twenty-one, right?
Well, I don't, you know, it's, it might be like when I was on town council and we had several people who lived up on Sherwood Avenue. Nobody wanted to have that road paved and I was like, that thing is absolutely horrible. But, yeah, it needs some work on it, so. But that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything to come before the board at this time? Hearing nothing, we'll be adjourned.